Yes, I have for.
Yeah, yeah.
Do you think we missed a roll?
Okay.
I stayed at.
Mary.
The gambling.
All right, let's open this select board meeting with the.
Board of Assessors.
We're opening the Board of Assessors.
With people in a assessors meeting when they start that. Jackie, do we have you on the line? How's my thought you did that? I don't like this show.
Hi.
Uh, Jackie, you're, are you ready to go?
Jackie, you on here? You're muted.
I'm here.
There you are.
Yes, you are.
I'm here and living color.
Okay.
Take her away. What do you got?
What have I got? Well, I have one that Renee has in her hand that unfortunately I don't have, so I'll have to go back to that in a second. First, I have our abatement for Sharon Dinsmore, who has a piece of land with a couple trailers on it. And she gave it over to her son and she was still charged for uh some land. So that sum is sixty-four dollars and seventy-four cents. And the second one I have is a supplemental for Steven Rice, who was admitted from the tax rolls because I think you'll see some of this next year, trust me. He sold a piece of his land to somebody else, kept some for himself. And it was assumed that he sold the whole thing. And it's three hundred and thirty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
All right.
Actually. All right, what was the one you had, Renee?
This is the abatement for Chris Grant, divided property into two parcels.
That was the one, it was, yeah. How much was that for?
Three oh one forty-six.
All right, I'm sorry, Chris Grant was the one who had the trailer on his mother's property and both of them got charged. Sharon Dinsmore was the one with the Steven Rice. She was the counterpart, the one who had been, who needed an abatement because she was charged for all the land and Steven Rice got some of it.
Okay, so we've got the three thirty-eight supplement, three thirty-three one, a sixty-four seventy-four, and the abatement is for three oh one forty-six.
Two abatements.
Two abatements, one.
I'll make the motion, we accept both abatements and the supplement.
One second.
Further discussion, all those in favor? One, two.
Shit.
Three. All right, we're all set.
Did you want to ask? I did want to. Can I just ask?
We had a question.
Hey, Jackie, just kind of wondering where you're at in the reassessment piece of things.
Well, I got a whole bunch done and I got a whole bunch to do.
Okay.
I've lost you all. Wait a minute, I, I, I do want to talk to you, but I gotta get back in here again and see what the hell I did. Hold on. Can you see me? I guess it doesn't matter.
No, we haven't seen you.
There we go. There we go, I see you. So where we're at is we've done initial visits to all the houses. We're going through, looking for, I'm going through all the cards and getting them in the computer. My next step is I'm going back through all the cards to see which ones might be missing, a sketch or missing a photo. Or there's something on there that looks weird to me and I want to go back and look at it. So I'm doing all that. And then I've also got a whole stack of real estate sales. So I'm getting to the point, once I get done with that, what I'm doing right now, I'm good, is I'm going to go back in and map out what's sold when and for how much. But right now, I was basically just trying to get everything in on the cards and everything sketched and everything pictured. And then I'll know, then I can concentrate on land values and what I need to do to that and, and the other. The other thing, the other thing we're at is, is because I sent all these people letters for April 1st saying, I want your abatement request. And once I get all those and get them looked at, I probably will try to come to a meeting or ask you guys if I can have a meeting where we'll discuss what I got and ask you what you want to do about it because it is your town. I'm definitely not going to keep my mouth shut and not give you my opinion, but.
When in like you're looking at things, do you think you'd be ready for like that kind of a discussion? Three months, five months, two months, one?
Oh, no, 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 sooner than that. Sometime in May.
Oh, okay. Good for me.
I am going to, I want to kind of get it all together and do a little fact finding. And then see if I can make an appointment with you guys, come down and come to a meeting and, and lay it out for you.
Excellent. Works for me.
All right?
Yep.
Jackie, you got anything else to?
I don't, I don't. So we're all, we're all good thanks to Renee organizing me. We're all good for at least tonight, so.
She is good.
I will, and I will, I'm planning on being there when, a week from today, Renee.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Keep up the great work. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye bye.
Assessors meeting. And at this time, what to open up the support meeting is now seven minutes and five. And we'd like to start with the flag of allegiance. All right, flag of allegiance.
The United States of America and the republic over which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome those who are here and those of you watching in TV land. Like to start off with a motion to sign the words.
Is that a motion?
May I handle it?
Oh, I'll make that motion.
How seconded?
All those in favor?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of March 1st, March 8th, and March 14th.
And all those in favor? All right, no business. First on the agenda is personnel, call us.
Take this one? Can we take this one?
Sure.
In your packet. Should come right up to the visit page, it says vacations. And after the discussion that we've had about some of the requests about some of the extra time or whatnot for sick time, I spoke with Suzette and we came up with this idea and it's in the, it's the underlying portion. Fourth paragraph down. Basically, employees can only roll over a hundred and twenty hours to the next fiscal year at June 30th. And sometimes employees have a hard time actually using up some of that extra time, they end up losing whatever. So instead of losing that time or rushing it, something that they don't want to do, we came up with the idea of allowing an employee to put up to forty hours in another bracket called sick time, which can only be used for sick time. It doesn't need to be paid out, it's, it's just time. It's not an extra time. It's time that they'd already earned and it's just going to sit in an account up to forty hours that they can use dedicated to if they're injured or sick. And then it doesn't dip into their pet time, which is also considered for vacation.
Well, that is a perfect idea.
I talked to some of the other employees and they, they liked the idea.
It's right down in the middle of.
Right. It's like a happy medium.
Yeah.
It's a reward for, for working. If you have all that time, then, then, yeah. You don't just automatically lose it, it can go into forty. You would have to vote to.
This is what we put on now and then vote to change it in the policy.
Yep. Add it to the policy.
So my only, my only concern is, as I read it, that they will not accrue pet time if they begin an unpaid leave of absence, lay off, long-term disability, or workman's comp after three months. If they become separated, they will not be paid. So this all came from the conversation in regards to like kind of long-term injury or illness and not wanting to use pet time for it. And I don't really have a problem with this. I just knew that when the personnel policy was changed and we lumped all that vacation, sick leave, holiday into one, we calculated the time figuring vacation, sick time. And I don't have a problem with people saving time, you know, for something, but just that I just, I just worry where it's going to like kind of go, you know? Because it really is more than, not that they don't deserve more than five point something hours accumulated.
This isn't more.
No, no.
Not, I know it's there, but it is, you know, it could be conceived at the time of when they had it, that they want to use, you know, a sick day. It's not from the current time. I don't really have a problem with it. It's just that, you know, my mind kind of works that way. Like what does that, you know, what does that kind of do to?
So you're saying out, like you're out of sick time, so then you dip?
I don't, no, it's, it's more that like, I don't know, it's, I don't know, there's just something in my head that like, you know, we calculated the pet time as a combination of everything. So each year they get that, thinking that it's, you know, vacation, sick time, holidays for that coming year, but they're, and I don't, it appears it'll be a perpetual forty-hour rollover problem for some people because you probably would wind up never using any of your pet time.
There's a lot of people that won't even make it to this, to be honest.
Right.
Most people use their time.
Okay.
So this is only for time that can't be rolled over above the hundred and twenty.
I'll make a motion.
Most people use their time.
I'll make a motion, we accept it as written, the change in the policy. I like this idea, I miss. It's good for everybody.
It stays at forty.
It can't go higher than forty. Some might only have two or three hours, and so that's all they'll have.
And it's their time anyway.
Until they use it. It's not, yeah. The hundred and twenty will roll.
Right.
Usable for.
If you have a hundred and twenty eight, you won't lose the eight. The eight will go into this forty. See?
Exactly.
And did we, and did we, and we totally like, don't want to consider the idea of putting the extra sick time that they got into a general pool that would maybe be used for, you know, like, I don't know, in my thinking, the conversation came about for like a long-term injury, trying to avoid having to use up pieces so that, I don't know, part of me is like, I don't know if it was like in a collective pool and it was like a, a dire situation. I just don't want people, you know, not using time for the year, using sick time that if it wasn't a general pool and it was a circumstance that, you know, people could draw the time. I don't know, I am.
I actually would like to get other two, so I can run out here on, because my first thought, just from my old world, is that's your time and you use it and it's there for a reason to use. And that's for your mental health and your physical health. It's not there to accumulate and accumulate and accumulate. So the time of day you end up leaving and you get this big fat huge amount. It does, but it also sounds like if it was going to be four weeks, we'd have made it four, or if it wasn't going to be a hundred and twenty, we'd change it to a hundred and sixty or, so.
Well, that is a hundred and twenty, so if there's an employee leaves, then they can't accrue two hundred and somewhat hours in the town.
And that's happened before. That's what happened before.
That's protected now.
Yeah, it's three hundred.
But absolutely, if you want to table it, table it.
I just think we'd be fair to get the opinion of the other two.
I'll draw my motion.
It has, it did get seconded, so.
So we didn't have to go back to undoing that to do that to then undo it to do it.
Back motion to table it.
Can we skip ahead to number eleven? She is here.
Do you want to make a motion to table it?
I'll make a motion that we table it.
Okay, and yes, we're going to skip to eleven because someone wants to then crack open a bottle. So for those in the viewing audience, Narrowscape liquor license new application is in your packets. With this, we have a seeing.
It's all there, all boxes are checked.
And all boxes are checked. I know you like looking at that.
I do.
I like to look if maps are there and changes, but this is the first map of.
And it's all, it's all good.
So looks all good. And any further discussion on this, if you want to.
No, I make a motion to reprove the license.
All right, we'll second that.
And all those in favor of liquor license for the Narrowscape? Good to go. A copy is going to be made and available for you tomorrow. Okay, we're a little short-staffed, but as I tell you, just wait a minute, but if you don't mind, it's nice to see you again. How are you?
Well, thank you very much and I'm looking forward to having lots of wine.
Yeah, me too.
I knew, you were so quick.
Thank you very much.
Is that going around the city?
And make sure you sign it blue.
All of us in here. The one that says blue.
Yeah, that's why we all have to be pen.
And let's find the where. All right, and let's get back up now to grant application.
Yes, we were notified by SCDC, no, is that, no, Manny Oliver at Oliver Associates, that there's some additional congressional funding that she wanted us to, like, obtain some letters of support, which I did that. And this is for overage. If you recall, this upgrade, the wastewater treatment plant has been going on for centuries now. Pre-pandemic, prices have started to drop since. They're having a hard time keeping the five million and the, within the scope of all the, of the upgrades, things have had to be cut. So she encouraged us to go after some additional funds. So this is just to let you know that we've done that. So hopefully we'll get some of that.
All for any additional funds.
Yes.
I would have to say the second one is probably yours too.
Ah, yes.
Oh, yeah, this is right down in your row.
AEDs located all over Lubec and this was a fantastic collaborative project, community-wide, from the Lubec Women's Club, the Lions Club, Regional Medical Center, actually Bobby Hook from the Fire Department, the chief, he and I, and Julia Brady came in and we filmed the commercial.
I saw that.
And they filmed our video. And it's been all, it's on our Quad TV cable channel, it's been on Facebook and YouTube, so it's, it was a really fun community.
Somebody used the fire team as a guinea pig, I won't tell you.
So, I mean, we're, what other town in Washington County has all of these AEDs though? Lubec is a very safe place to be. So I am very proud of this project and thank you to all the organizations that make this happen.
And the list is on the face, on our, what's that?
Yes, and there's a QR code. You can scan, there's QR codes around town at whatever, and you can scan it with your phone and it'll take it to right to our website and this list will populate.
So off the top of your head, how many are there?
Eleven. Plus, I think there's another one at, that's not on here, and that's at the West Waterhead Station, right down.
There's one at the White House and one also at the North.
And all the, I didn't notice, all the Bursen trucks are equipped. And Apple has been working with us as well.
Well, we just created a list.
The list, yeah.
It's on our website.
Yeah.
Fantastic.
Moving on, AARP grant economic development.
That would be nice.
Yes, that's just a notice. It's just a notice. From that one meeting I mentioned to you guys at the economic development, somebody pointed out the AARP has this small grant option. So mentioned it to Dan and Rachel at a meeting, but it was a meeting that wasn't on the agenda, but we opted to put the application in. And if we get it, we're going to put another bench and stop the park and tidy up the garden.
Which continues to get more and more beautiful every year.
Absolutely does. I walked the dog the other day and we found a way down and, and as we turned the left onto Lower Water Street, it was like the perfect, the sun was coming up, the sculpture was there, the sun was peeking through the tree. I was like, geez.
Man, I remember that sculpture. How many years ago was that?
What's that?
The sculpture.
Sculpture, yeah.
I remember when it built.
Eight or nine?
We need to give your dog some props. When is the dog's name that was walking?
Lloyd.
Lloyd? That was a beer drinker.
Yeah. All right, there you go, Lloyd, just helping you out there.
So we'll let you know, they're supposed to do a decision in April. And it's a, it's a short-term grant, like if we got it, let's be done with everything by November. If it happens, then it should be coming this year.
Very cool.
So we did get some of the update on the tank.
Yeah.
Yes. The, well, there's the letter. Just the, the letter for the congressional direct spending. The in-hoff tank, the second one is complete and done and online, so big kudos to Brian Donovan and his guys. We even had a manhole catastrophe down, it was, it's a come-to-a-plow down through Mallory. And Brian Donovan and the crew were right there with concrete and fixed the whole thing.
Saw the cones.
Yes. Yeah, they had to.
And with that dog, Lloyd.
They had to lift their roof. They took right there.
Yeah, it was nice though.
So that's just an update.
That's great, so something is moving along very nicely. I just have shellfish.
Amanda was supposed to be here. This was, this was stuff carried over from the meeting that got canceled due to the storm. But she, I believe, is going to pass. There are two boats, are you, who's on the shellfish committee? Were you at that meeting when the big boat discussion down behind the sea view was taking place?
Yeah, she talked about that.
Okay, yeah. They didn't know, they wanted to get rid of it and they thought that they could bury it, but it goes in there now. I said, no, you cannot just bury it.
Right.
But they want, I think they want to use it as conservation hours to dismantle it, arrange with Jason on getting it some sort of a dumpster. You're going to need to pack it unless you have it already. So it was just an update. She goes into salvage rights and everything.
I recommended to her to talk to you about it to see if she can put it with a brush, seeing as. You know, be sure, well, that's kind of what I was thinking. No fuel cost.
It's fiberglass, isn't it?
Yeah, and I don't think there's an issue with getting it off the beach and putting it there myself. I mean, you could call the DEB last night, but I don't think they have an issue with it.
No, if everything was blessed, I have no problem, but it just.
That's all you'd have to do is call the DEB, say, hey, look, we have this old boat.
The two.
Two old boats there. This is what they are. We have a place where we're putting brushes. Is it okay if we just take up, just put it there? Put it there. I mean, I'm more than willing to haul it one.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever they.
I think they were going to cut it off at the hall.
Yeah.
I think that's all she was going to do.
Was going to say?
Yep.
It's a story that goes along with this.
That's mine. Senior Fuel Grant Award?
I saw that letter. That's cool.
Yes, this was Suzette. She signed it. She applied, yep. She applied to the Heart of Maine United Way and they donated four thousand two hundred twenty-one dollars and ninety-seven cents towards Senior Fuel Fund.
Wow.
And that has, I can tell you, that spent fifty.
I saw, I saw there were quite a few on this spender's list and then the last one too.
Which is great, that's got four.
Did you pick that number?
Four thousand two hundred twenty-one ninety-seven.
That is awesome.
Heart of Way United Way, Heart of Maine United Way.
Well, thank you Suzette, and thank you, the Heart of Maine United Way for that nice contribution to help replenish some of that.
We saw them.
Well-used, well-measured.
This next item is also from Suzette.
Well, you know, she's just taken up too much stuff, but go ahead.
This is a good one as well. This is a Maine Homeowner Assistance Fund that if you're eligible, people can get help with their mortgage payments right now. And there's a table. I am going to put this on our town website so that people can have. It's a state program, but sometimes they get buried in the state website, so.
And the figures are pretty impressive for Washington County on families of two that. I think some folks here could, you know, some folks might be able to get some help for it.
Right.
Yeah.
And it's not just your mortgage payments. There's some other things, utility, home, energy, internet, broadband payment assistance. There's a bunch of things. And this is from, again, from the Maine Homeowner Assistance Fund. So Maine, you can find out more at mainhomownerhelp.org.
Suzette's just right on top of that.
Oh, yeah.
Must be those helping walks I see her taking now. She affords by you with that?
Yeah.
There you go. Onward and upward, been several discussions quite recently regarding posting roads.
We are way too late to this game.
Late for this season. My initial thought was of concern to those in the community, we will be here every other Wednesday, most inclusively in probably October, probably late October, which would be a wonderful time to bring up this topic as to what roads perhaps should be posted.
Yeah.
For the season.
And I agree with you, Dan. I mean, we got a plan for this. We can't just throw it on the public and say, we're posting these roads. That's not right to do. There's no frost in the ground right now anyway. Post the roads when the frost is coming on. There's no frost in the ground. So I say no. Make a motion, but no.
Well, who brought this? I mean, I don't even understand. Was it somebody asking to do it or, or who's asking?
The public works director, Ricky.
He's asking to post roads now because he is concerned for the conditions of the roads?
Yes.
So I don't think anybody overlooks those conditions. Believe me, I'm stopped every day.
We're going to fix these damn roads.
Well, what's killing the roads is they're thawed out and they're piling them.
Right. The part of the discussion was that the roads can be posted with the work and the weight of trucks and things like that, but it costs time for the fall.
Well, spring is when you post roads if there's a frost. I understand, I understand. I mean, what is, where, I don't want to disregard what Ricky is recommending without like.
But we don't know what Ricky's recommending.
Right. I don't, that's what I'm asking. What are we looking for here?
This was on the March fifteenth agenda, so this, that meeting that canceled because of the storm, because of the.
You, you post the roads when the frost is coming out, frost is done. What's damaging the roads right now is there is, there is no, the roads aren't frozen.
Is Ricky suggesting something now?
I called him yesterday, because Jason called.
Yeah, that's what we don't know. I mean, I look at it simply as if you post when you're heading into the season of frost. If he has a reason or a plan.
I, I would only say.
I'd like to know what the reason and plan is.
Well, I think your road commissioner or the person in charge of your roads, I would, I would carefully second-guess that person. You know what I mean? It's, you know, I just would carefully second-guess that person. If he's, if he's got reasons to want to post roads, I'm not sure who am I to say, don't post it.
I'm not either, but I don't know what it is.
I don't, I don't think that, I think he has more knowledge on roads posting than I do, so.
Is this just a generic of what do you want us to do? Does he have specific?
I don't think he needs our permission to post roads.
I'm sure that we ever posted was last year, that Lubec had never posted until last year. And that duty does fall solely on. And it, and that duty does fall solely on the select board.
What we post to you.
You have to post all. If you, if you decide to post one, you have to do all your local roads.
Well, here's, here's my issue. If we can't plan this ahead.
You mean what I hear?
If we can't plan this ahead, shame on us, okay?
Absolutely, I agree.
We have people, we have people that have started constructions of new homes, that started building new homes. You can't get materials to those new homes to slap up a sign tomorrow and say, you guys are all done.
But you also have responsibility to take care of the road first.
There's no frost in the road. That's why you post the roads. There's no frost, though.
But all the other towns around us, they're supposed to.
Well, today I was down on Lower Water Street, and Huntley was down there filling in the holes. So, they're obviously out and about.
Well, yes, they can only do that when it's warmer.
If there's frost in the roads, you don't cold patch them if frost in the roads.
No, there's no frost.
Julie, I will never do that. I promise you. You will never catch me hot, hot.
I don't even know what we're supposed to be doing here.
And I, and I don't, I don't either. I mean, if he's, if, I mean, I agree with you. I mean, I don't know what, patch on the road or patch on the.
Or maybe if he's available to talk to now, that'd be great to hear what he, what he likes to. Or if not, I'm gonna suggest be table and see if he can come talk to us, and by then Jason won't even want us.
And that'll be.
And I do agree that.
It's already too late.
And I do agree that, you know, if we are gonna post roads, it should be a mindful thought in preparation in the wintertime before the spring. And like you said, people should kind of know roads are gonna be posted, you know?
It's like from henceforth, we will always be posting roads.
When I was supervising, there was always prior planning. Prevents piss-poor performance.
Sure, sure. I agree.
Shame on us, you know?
Hey, Ricky, you're in the meeting. They have, the select board has some questions for you now. So, I guess it'll be my question. So, what, what do you want to post in, like, now? You know, like, what's, what you thinking here? I don't understand what we're looking for, posting roads. And does that have to be all local roads that somebody stated, or do you have specific roads you're looking at?
I, I, I can't hear what she's saying or anything.
What roads do you want to post and why at this time?
Well, Knottville Beck's I'd like to post because we just did that whole road. And I didn't really want all that heavy weight on it. But once, once I post that one, I gotta post Straight Bay, Crow's Neck, and the back road. Because we had damaged frost here at the back road. And I had to have the company come back in and re-hotdog the piece of it, which luckily we didn't get charged for. Them's the roads I want posted.
All, all secondary roads.
Yes.
The thing is, Ricky.
I know what the thing is.
There's no frost in the ground anymore.
That's the problem. There isn't any frost in the ground. You know better than that.
Right, exactly. You post the roads when the frost is coming out.
Well, okay. Then, then I guess obviously the roads don't need to be posted, is what you're saying, right?
I think the question is, hey Ricky, by the way you stand. If you're gonna post, is, is there a notification or a process that we would allow on those, on those streets come fall for any work or construction that's going on? Like, if I'm building a house right now on Straight Bay, and I've got guys coming in to draw.
It would come under that. It would come under that, I'm pretty sure. The only ones that wouldn't come under that is like the God's truck, two old truck, buy a truck. You know, them type vehicles wouldn't come under that policy. But your dump trucks, your, your delivery trucks, not so much the delivery trucks that's, you know, like a ton truck, that's not gonna come under it. It's, it's, I guess what I, I guess I can say about posting roads is look what happened last year when Knottville Beck was traveled on with all this land, rock, gravel, and all this, and then we hot-tocked it. I guess if you look at it before and after, you'd see the difference.
I can, I can tell you, the Hennessy boys aren't gonna be there until the end of May.
So, how long would they be posted for? If you, if you were to post them now, you would post them like now, and they would be posted for how long?
Probably after mud season, which would be, what, this is April, May.
Hi, Jim.
Yeah, about, about probably the end of May. Hello?
Okay. We've all that. We're, we're taking it all in. Okay, so, and.
I'm just trying to protect what we got left. And believe me, we ain't got much left, okay? And that's all I'm trying to do. I'm trying not to close anybody down from work. Although I have already heard rumors that when everybody gets their roads posted, we're going to move back because they don't post this. And.
It's very true.
And what's that?
I said, I think that's true.
My, my whole thing is, my whole thing is, we should have been sitting here in November. And I asked in November, what are the list of roads that we were gonna post now so people had the heads up? So they could get the stuff they needed to build their houses, to do their work. It's not right to the public to all of a sudden tomorrow to stick up a sign and say, you're all done. That's wrong, in my opinion.
I tell you, Jason, I don't think that you're gonna have any problem with the public.
No, I'm not, because I'm not gonna vote for it.
And that's up to you. That's entirely up to you. The thing is, I want this to go before the board to be voted on. So, when I start getting the questions late to me like I did last year, I got the answer.
So, so tell me this, Ricky. The amount of damage that you would project would, would happen with, you know, if, if the roads weren't posted. Any idea, like, you know, what are we saving? I under, you know, I understand we're saving the roads, but I, I can appreciate your statement. You know, if you saw it last year and saw it this year, you'd know. I'm assuming that there's wear and tear and, you know, the road is already having some issues. So, would we prevent that for another year or two? Like, what, what's the benefit of, of, of posting these roads for the next ten, twelve weeks?
I don't think we gotta post them that long, no. I, I, I don't. I'm, I'm, I'm just trying to protect what we got left. That's all I'm trying to do. And I, I mean, this is my first year of this too. I mean, you know, Jason's got points. I understand that, but, I mean.
But there could be exemptions for, like, if somebody was already in construction or something? Would they be able to get down these posted roads, or?
No, no.
No?
Not what's, not what's the posted, no.
And they're like really big trucks? Like, what's the weight of it?
Wow.
Anything over twenty-three thousand can't pass the road.
Anything over twenty-three thousand.
Now, I, I've talked to the Hennessy Brothers. They are not gonna start work until the end of May and move it back.
Jason, I'm not going. I'm not going. I'm not going by the Hennessy Brothers.
Right.
And I, I don't care about the Hennessy Brothers, okay? All I care about right now is that road that we put a pile of money into. That's all I care about. I don't wanna, I don't want to ruin these roads in the back. I'm not set up for what's going over.
Nope, never have been. That's their truth.
I, I hear that. All right, I don't have any more questions. Anybody else?
Bye.
You're a good man, Ricky. I, I appreciate that.
Thanks, Ricky.
Thank you, Ricky.
Well, no, I'm, like I said, I'm just, I'm, I'm just trying to protect what we got left. And believe me, it's, it's getting worse every year. I mean, look at Dewey Street, you know? It's gotta be done. It's gotta be hot-dogged. We gotta come up with some money somewhere.
Well, I know that.
Get these roads, get them structured out. I mean, we got to.
Yep, we hear you. All right.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bye.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
First thing we're gonna do is get the water away from ditching. That's the biggest thing.
So, are you going to?
Yeah. Any more discussion?
I think that was sufficient.
What, is there a motion right now?
Not yet.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we allow Ricky and the Public Works to post roads if they feel appropriate this year with an understanding or, or, you know, a recommendation that for the twenty-fourth spring, you know, notification and posting is done sooner than what's gonna happen this year because it's evidently gonna be very quick that they're posted. And I think that, I hear what he's saying, and, and, you know.
If you're gonna post, if you're gonna post a secondary road, you do them all.
I understand that. I'm just saying that, you know.
Because I'll tell you, the heartburn would be unbelievable. Oh, you posted that one in our pistol?
Well, I mean, you know, I just think we should allow them to post them and that we should, you know, encourage a, a, a better notification system for the future around posting roads.
Well, I mean, I mean, something we should be, we should do annually.
Annually, that's what I'm saying. I'm not against it.
Right, and in the fall.
Right.
I, I think what's in question here is, you know, no one would suggest, okay, let's start this in the fall. And every fall, we said, and we announced that all secondary roads are closed or whatever on wait until such or such a time. The commitment by doing it now is anyone who's already started a project.
But isn't, my understanding about.
Or has that, I mean, you're telling me maybe no, but.
I mean, my understanding about posting roads is the purpose, like, in the wintertime, that's when your roads are secure and they're frozen, and you can run the heavy equipment on it and all that kind of stuff. Come this time of year, you can shift things, run things, buy those big trucks running on soft underground roads. I think that's happening right now. So, I think that, you know, what Ricky's saying makes sense, that they should post the roads. And I understand they'll be disappointed and upset people. But I think at a hundred and seven thousand dollars a mile, we need to be mindful of how do we maintain roads. And I think best practice is to post them. I understand that.
Right, we should have done this in November.
Well, but you posted in the spring from, I understand, when the snow is melting.
I'm saying we should have planned this in November.
Oh, I understand that. I, I agree. I agree, so that.
Yes, yes, so it's an annual process.
But I don't think, I don't think we don't do it this year because.
Yes, I agree with you.
You know, I think the damage that could be done this year is avoidable, even though we have to post quicker than we would like to. So, that's my motion, that we allow Ricky to post.
I still have one more. I don't even know if it's a factual question.
Those are a second to my motion.
Yeah, of course I'm.
Just a question here. In the past, Emera has come forward on an annual basis requesting a blanket exemption from posting because their equipment is rather heavy.
Yes.
And they're concerned about people that don't have electricity and them not being able to get out and repair.
When they fall into the same.
They may fall into the same thing, I believe, as like a driving contractor.
Yeah, they may get.
Yeah, the, the, yeah. They're essential services.
So, my only question is, and on the surface of all this and talking to Ricky, I would say, yeah, we should go ahead. But is there any, let's say, Jones Construction Company has already committed contractually and everything else to start building a home out on a certain street starting two weeks from now?
They won't be able to do it.
And then we tell them we can't. Are we under any problems?
No, I don't believe so. I hope people that have equipment sitting in the roads right now.
Like, when I say problems, do I have anyone sitting going, excuse me? This is after what we've already done. We were not made aware.
Yeah.
Grabbing my.
And presumably, they have to go through the planning board before they get all of those things signed, like the contract.
There's not a whole bunch that gets, you know.
And when they do that.
Only if it's Shoreland.
Oh.
What are we gonna do with people that have their equipment in there and it's gonna be trapped?
That.
Code.
Then the code person needs to be up on that and let them know.
But here, here's my question. What about the people that have this stuff, say, down Redmond, Redmond Road and all this? They're gonna let their stuff sit there for a month.
Yeah. Well, or, or there might be consideration, you know, for a one-time if they're taking it off for something else. I mean, you know, if we don't post the roads, trucks are gonna run over them anyhow. So, one more of them runs over to make something work for somebody.
Don't get me wrong. I'm not against posting roads. I'm against the way we're doing it.
I'm curious, not great, but I still think we have to do it.
We need the plan ahead. We, there's, there's, we're gonna have winter, and we're gonna have spring. We knew it was coming, and here we are, just reacting instead of planning for something. We're just reacting.
Why would you stop that? Why would you, why would you do that?
We should have talked about it in November.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we should have had a list.
You guys voted to, to do this for the first time last year.
Right, we were gonna talk about it in November.
And then we, we never set up.
Every spring.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, now you get Heather, you get people that Heather and Lynn.
Yeah, most haven't posted that.
They can't get a move in there.
I know, it's been last week.
Okay, did I catch it, Joey?
Yeah, it's not. They don't Heather and Lynn.
Yeah, no. We would have done it last year.
I mean, I would pay you respect to, to Ricky and his professionalism and the fact that we did discuss this in the fall to a planned thing. I, I'd like to think that maybe we should just roll the dice and.
Do you think it's second motion?
Yeah, and, and do it and just, I don't know if we can make, we can't really make exceptions, but if we can maybe have some equipment removed if there's such a case of that, or make them aware. I don't know if that's possible through the.
If you call the vote, I can tell you it's gonna happen. Could you second it?
I, I would be willing to second it.
Call the vote.
Yeah, the vote, all those in favor.
All those again? The vote does not pass because we don't have a full board. And we've learned through MMA, legal and other, that you have to have a full board. You can't have anybody vote against.
Well, that's already what I was thinking of. We can always break this by having our fifth there.
No, I can't believe that to be true, because if you have a quorum, you can conduct business.
I didn't believe it either, but it has to be unanimous.
Well, see, Carol.
For posting roads.
We're gonna vote like this?
For any vote on a board. When, when you don't have a full board present, the votes have to be unanimous to carry.
Oh, oh.
It's designated from an editorial.
Right? I can pull it up in my email.
Well, then.
I.
Sounds a little bizarre, but I.
It does sound a little bizarre.
I can verify it, and if it's any different, then we'll call a special select committee later, but.
Works for me.
I, I thank that knowledge.
We'll do it real quick.
From MMA legal that it has to be.
Or it, or it could be over the phone.
No, I can go look at my email.
No, no, that's.
Let's just wrap this up. I'm not going for it. We know better.
Yeah, well, if, if you don't have a full board present, it has to be unanimous to carry.
Okay.
If not, then it will.
Oh, so it could have been unanimous had somebody voted yes, is that what you're saying?
That's what I'm saying.
Okay. Gotcha.
But if it had been all five of us, then it would have been a draw.
Yeah.
I didn't know.
All right, well, there we go.
And it was school board that brought it to my attention on something that they.
All right, well, Carol.
Okay.
And thank God that's not in twice anymore.
Good one to have on that twice.
Second. Ooh, okay. On a happy note here.
I could go look up that if you want to talk about that.
Phase two of the bandstand. I can take some of this on the RLF board. There's been a project in the works with some great volunteer workers of salvaging, repairing, and making a new or beautiful bandstand downtown. Last year, they did some of the work. Phase two is now underway. There's a little more discussion on some pieces that we may or may not be able to replace. But just to update you, that next, as volunteer time allows itself, you will see some more work being done on our bandstand downtown.
I'd like to make a suggestion, if possible. Now, mind you, this is coming from a woman who still has her Christmas wreath up on the door. I'd like lights to be taken off the bandstand.
I, I think phase two will.
Take care of that.
Take care of that for now, yes.
And I'll take the wreath up my door.
You're just letting the road, maybe they come up and, maybe they come up and take it down for you.
They'll grab it for you.
Yeah, they'll take it for you. We'll ask, we'll ask the gang there working on it.
I left my wreath up because, until Valentine's, because it was shaped like a heart.
I got away with it.
But certainly, for those of you who attend these Stockford Park concerts and all, as you see this construction going on, Kurt and his team are in the volunteer doing that. Certainly, maybe we thank you or throw a little more charitable contribution in the basket when you're enjoying the concerts.
Yeah, Chris Farr came to the, was the new president, right?
Mm-hmm.
To the recent Lubec Landmarks meeting and invited us and encouraged a lot of us to participate this summer.
Uh, to the recent Lubec Landmarks meeting and invited us and encouraged a lot of us to participate this summer in the ongoing of.
They restructured Kurt's district of the rest.
Is, whatever, it's all, I know when I was president, everybody wanted the title.
Do you want me to go on to the next congressional spending?
Uh, yes.
Uh, another congressional directed spending letter of support, there is, I was contacted by Sunrise County Economic Council, Jen Peters, that there was a, um, it's a, like a heat source option. They're gonna, they would, there's not gonna be any match required. And we decided to go with the Public Works Garage, which has the largest consumption of propane for fuel.
That's a.
And somebody's gonna come and do analysis and solar panels could be involved, and heat pumps. And there's no, it'll all be free if we're chosen. We have to be a, um, like a locally depressed area, and so she, she suggested.
Have you driven down the road?
The vet machines and junk food, I believe, we're chosen, but, um.
Yeah.
So I will send this to her on Friday.
Did I show that gate off down there, hole in the back there? Did they get anything going over there? The garage that.
That's it.
Uh, uh, Safe Harbor Testing and Equipment, April 3rd to May 3rd.
Yeah, that's just an announcement that, uh, for people, if you see any equipment going in behind, um, the Historical Society, that they're gonna be testing from April 3rd to May 3rd. So Carol says leave them alone.
So Carol said leave them alone?
Yep.
So anybody not want to, you gotta do Carol. All right. Other business, I know, uh, our internet guru, Martha would like to just give us a quick update on the internet services.
My, my quick update is the most recent word, the second round of, um, main coalition, main, yeah. I always say this.
It's not main coalition, it's something else now.
Yeah, the main broad, main broad connectivity, main connectivity authority. The second round of grants for that, as you know, we didn't make on the first. We were hoping it would be this spring, they have delayed it until August. So that, um, essentially they're revamping their criteria. They're hoping to make it more community owned, friendly.
How kind of them.
They took a lot of grief for how much of this money ended up going to consolidated, et cetera.
That's what I love about Mainers.
They're, they're looking at tweaking things a little bit, and this may help us if we decide to go back. We understand we'll have to go to town meeting and all of that all over again, but here we go.
Smile, smile when you say that.
Ah, smile when you say it, right.
I kinda have a question.
Oh, yeah.
Look for a name, a different subject. Okay, we heard that. I was wondering, now I mentioned it in the answer, we still have COVID money, right?
Arguably, yeah.
Is that something we can put towards the road repairs? As far as paving, is that something you could look into?
I would care what's into it.
Because I mean, infrastructure, exactly.
It is infrastructure, but I, I don't.
I think it was wastewater and.
I know, it, it was pretty specific, they did expand them though, they, they, they real, but it is supposed to be in preparation for another pandemic, whatever he's supposed, but it could be, but it could be any sewer or water because. Yeah, the importance of that. But like, you know, some town halls are making the roof bigger, get it mixed for that. And the manhole covers sits in there because it's water and sewer. That's why, I don't know, maybe we could use it, use it up in that category, something with the water and sewer department.
Well, I mean, that's the way, yeah, I was just joking, saying, but that's the way you go, and so maybe.
Right, that, that was identified in the plan, but like, you couldn't use it for massive grant dollars, you couldn't use, there was a lot of things you, there wasn't a lot of things you couldn't use it for, but like you couldn't use it for like some of your standard like roads. You couldn't use different grant matches, but then they tried to, that's when I went to that training on it. And then since then, they've expanded what you can spend it on. We do have to spend it within like the next 18 months or something, so coming up with a way to spend it is a good idea.
And the reason I'm asking the question is I spoke with a selectman in another town, and that's what they did, would someone ask.
Is it for paving?
Yes, but it could have been a different.
Yeah, but it's only like a hundred thousand dollars left, so it wouldn't even pay them.
Well, no, but you put that on top of what we're gonna appropriate.
I think that's one large puzzle.
But if you put that on top of what we're appropriating, that'd be a big help.
Yeah, and then I don't know, like can, can the sewer department use it kind of around the road work that they would have to do? We'd have to take it out of the sewer, you know, take it out of road money anyhow, but if it was something that the sewer department was using, well then those funds could fall under that and, you know, because using it to find the manhole covers is a great idea, maybe using it.
We need the road to get to the sewer treatment.
Yes. That is true. And I mean, and that, and that, the second, the second, the second thing I went to, that's the kind of things they were saying. Well, that might be accepted, like who's putting in that kind of stuff, you know?
I can tell you, you've all picked up your budget books tonight. I did build into the paving budget an additional 100,000 dollars. And let the people vote on it.
On top of what we did last year.
Yes, so their paving line is 200,000 plus the money that we're gonna get from L-Rap, which is usually around almost 40,000. So, it still won't go very far.
I think, I think Lloyd would prefer a nice paved street down there.
What? Lloyd, Lloyd, Lloyd did a lot of walking around there. Yeah, as a matter of fact, the road, I was going to just say that the road to the water treatment plant is in South. They were down there now. They were down there a couple of, today.
I'll look at Ludbrook Street and Dewey Mallway.
I didn't want to say it, I saw it, I had to walk in the dog and it was swimming in the puddles.
That's bad.
Yeah.
Timmy Wim got another load of cold pack today, that's our second one.
So checking that, any particular committee updates? I kind of snuck mine out with RLF regarding the bandstand and, uh, obviously the, uh, planning with votes, so I'm kind of done on my end there.
I'd like to thank Timmy for his hard work.
Yeah.